Get started, recording started.
That's a big yawn right there.
Mayor, please don't forget to revisit number 29.
Thank you.
Visit that.
We've got a couple other on items. Recovered?
On that one, yeah.
Okay, so then.
We have a motion in a second.
Yep, we do. No, I didn't we take a vote on the last one?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, yep, we did. It was five, five in favor, none against. Ashley, can you confirm that we had that vote recorded?
Yes, I believe we did.
Okay. My last, my last question before we switch rooms was whether we had sufficiently addressed items 30, 34, and 35, which were all called up simultaneously. And the act that has been taken and was confirmed by council just before moving the meeting was the strike force as presented and then amended.
And it's not like Pegasus had an interest in stepping up the public participation process and that we don't need to amend the contract?
That's my understanding.
Okay. I'm good on all of mine and we can close it out with no other action.
Okay. I think we're good on, on 30, 34, and 35. Sarah has just noted that she believes items under 29 have been covered as well sufficiently. Council members, does anybody else have any interest in taking up item 29? Or are we good there with no action? We'll move on?
Good.
Great. We will move on then. Let's see, just to make sure we don't lose track, Amy correctly pointed out that 33 needs to be approved to make sure we're opening up the full pool of folks to serve on the strike force that allows us to also include people who are already serving on boards and or commissions, just for clarity sake there. And when I say that this was a really thoughtful approach to this, Wendy, tip of the hat to you and everybody else that contributed there. And one of the things that was noted was for a P&amp;Z member or an RCDC member, our code of ordinances actually prohibits somebody from serving on multiple commissions. And what we have here in item 33 is a temporary waiver of that?
No.
Is that fair? No? Okay, well, I'll tell you what, before I screw that up any worse, I will let Wendy then have the floor.
And so I brought this to Charlie and Amber over the weekend and Charlie was gracious enough to draft up an ordinance on Sunday for us. And it, the ordinance, my thought was that we would have to repeal the ordinance. And so Charlie said that he thought he would suggest modifying the ordinance to give the council authority to warm boards and commissions ad hoc when we feel like the skills of the people would be necessary to perform business. So before you, you have the modified draft ordinance 2020-09-16-33. And then it just says, except where provided in subsection B. And B is where city council finds that service on a standing board commissioner committee brings specific insight, knowledge, and expertise to a particular area or policy or process that may be valuable for decision making and recommendations on an ad hoc board, commission, or committee, then dual service on a standing board commission or committee and an ad hoc board, which means like a short term, not permanent. Commissioner or committee is authorized. City council shall make appropriate findings to support the dual service. So with that, I would make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-09-16-33, amending the code of ordinances, section 2-198, limitations on appointments to committees.
Second. Gavin's got it.
Gavin beat you. Okay, we have a motion from Wendy and a second from Gavin. Discussion council? Not hearing any. We'll call a vote. Amy?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Gavin?
Aye.
Buck?
Aye.
Right on. Okay. Charlie, thanks for working on a Sunday. Wendy, thanks again for putting, ensuring that this was all ready to go. That's 33. And that leaves us items 31 and 32. So let's go with 31. There we go. Discussion possible action regarding expectations for Pegasus in addressing blanket applications of fiscal scenario modeling to the commercials known areas of Rollingwood as part of the comprehensive plan process. Amy, this is, this is your item and I will give you the floor to introduce it.
Um, so I think that one of the things that was a takeaway from the work session that we had on the comprehensive plan that maybe was an unintentional takeaway that the consultant didn't intend was for people to understand the fiscal modeling scenario, blanket plans that the council might adopt. And we did have conversation at the work session, letting the consultant know many of us had different comments related to the fiscal modeling. We've had another council meeting, but just to, I think, alleviate some of the anxiety that I know still exists that's keeping people awake at night. I want everyone to sleep. I don't want anyone to lose any more sleep over this issue. I thought I would just add a specific agenda item to clarify with a record vote what the council has previously directed. So I have my understanding of what the council has previously directed. I'll make a motion based on it. And then if you all want to clarify, if I haven't encapsulated it correctly, then that would be great. So I would move to confirm the council's previous direction of Pegasus to focus on applications of the fiscal scenario modeling on a lot by lot basis, considering impacts of heights and lot lines and applying the existing height constraints modeled in fiscal scenario A as to commercial lots next to residential lots on the north side of the Cape Road.
Second.
We have a motion from Amy and a second from Wendy. Discussion council? This is, this was an item Amy correctly pointed out as being highly relevant to some of the community conversation. Do we have anybody in the community that has their hand raised?
Sorry, Mayor. Yes, Ryan Clinton has his hand raised.
Okay.
I know it's late. I'm just going to say a hundred percent supportive and thank you, council member, for helping us.
Do you think we should add, we're not going to double or triple the population either? Just for transparency.
If you'd like, I'd love that too, but either way.
Fair. Well, hopefully people understand that by implication. Or also feel free to amend your motion.
I was hoping to just clarify that there will be no blanket application and that these were fiscal modeling scenarios and not plans. Also, I think just in viewing how the community has come to understand these issues to provide that clarification, but if anybody has any additional language that they would like to add in clarifying that we're not going to double and triple residential.
I think it's a great motion as it is. Do you have a second yet?
Yes, I do.
Additional discussion, council?
I would add the agenda language, but my brain is too tired. But I'm not planning on double or tripling the population, just so it's on record myself.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the only thing we can do. I mean, that's not a thing.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I know, but it's the concern in the community. It really is.
I really don't want anyone else to lose sleep or feel like they need to sell their home because they're concerned about the, the reliability of what the council has actually said that they are going to do. So the goal is to provide clarity.
Any additional discussion, council? We have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote then. Amy?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Gavin?
Aye.
Buck?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thanks for bringing this up. I think the clarity was, was needed and most welcome. We'll move to item 32, discussion and possible action regarding expectations for Pegasus in addressing drainage considerations in the comprehensive plan process. Amy, this is also your item and so I will give you the floor here as well.
Thanks. So I know that we've had some conversations about making sure that we keep the comprehensive plan broad and that it doesn't get too narrow or too fixed. And, and so something that does keep me up at night is the occasional reentry of the conversation about residential impervious cover limit, which is something that if I had to go on an up or down vote on right now, I would emphatically be, be voting no to any sort of residential impervious cover limit. So I do think in a broader context, we've had a lot of response to our survey that indicates people are concerned about drainage. And I think that one of the things that has occurred to me is, and I've heard from other people as well, is that different people in our city, when they think of drainage, mean a lot of different things. And so I think that one thing that might be helpful in, in helping us to know what our consultant is going to do is in the IIP, there's a whole section of next steps that our engineers spent time working on. And I would just hypothesize that literally any engineer or planner that we were to hire as a city in looking at options for making recommendations to our city about drainage would most likely add impervious cover limits to the list because we don't have them. But we didn't put them in at the same time that the lot sizes, the buildable size of our lots changed. And so a lot of really hard work has been done on this council over, since that point in time to put drainage criteria manuals in place, the IIP, and a number of other things. We have ordinances that have the effect of encouraging people to maintain those green spaces with the tree ordinance. I'm hearing from residents now that as TCEQ is starting to apply regulations that are outside of our control, that residents are finding that their ability to build and there's by, based on TCEQ requirements is another effective, it's effectively limiting the impervious cover that they, they have on their property. And so I just wondered if the council would want to give some direction to Pegasus in this area because I think it's of course something that, like I said, I think any engineer or planner that we hire is going to have that on their list of things for us to consider. I think the language was pretty, you know, pretty well drafted in the IIP to point out that there are alternatives for us to consider. That we could, it might be prudent to establish those limits, but we could also have alternatives like drainage fees. And we could also look at additional drainage infrastructure. And so that our city has alternatives to that concept. And that seems to be the direction that many councils in the past have gone. If I'm the only one that's on this issue, then everybody can say, you know, we want, we want this policy addressed in our comprehensive plan. And I will make my comments as we move forward. But it would help me sleep better at night if I knew what the scope was of, of what types of decisions we might be looking at and making in the comprehensive plan process on this issue. So I can make a motion that, oh, good.
I'm not supportive of this approach. I think it's, it begins, it's a good first step to begin to roll in previous work that we've already done. So I'm not saying that it's everything that would go in there, but yeah. I think it's a right approach.
It's one of the strings on the balloons that we want to tie together and not reinvent the wheel?
Yeah.
I agree. I, I agree with that as well and.
I think it's a good roadmap for Pegasus to understand too, that when we talk about these things, we're not necessarily asking them to recreate the wheel. It's just about helping synthesize.
Sarah, go ahead.
I think we just established a procedure to have a strike force to talk about these things and get further input from all of our residents and all the members of the strike force. And I don't really want to be censoring them or restricting their options. You know, I think that that's something that we should give them the courtesy of being able to provide input on, instead of saying that they're not allowed to consider anything other than what's already been put in previous plans. To me, that's the whole point of having a comprehensive plan is looking at everything. And, and this motion to me sounds like we're saying you're not allowed to look at everything.
Well, the motion that just unanimously passed did the same thing.
It did.
So, yeah, I appreciate your, your point there. One thing I would say, guys, if you allow me just a minute to weigh in. The unintended consequences of putting limitations on residential development when we're limiting commercial development and putting limitations on any number of other things. You know, I know I get a, it is fun to, to deride the mayor for being all about the money. But at some point, guys, you got to understand that the lifestyle and the values and the amenities that we want, need, deserve, cost money. And the rest of the world doesn't really care if we're keeping up with it or not, right? So if you continue to limit the ability for the city to grow revenue, and we have instances such as the pandemic that is going to impact our sales tax and impact any number of other items. And then we have political issues that are going to stop a county appraisal district from doing their job. It puts us in a pretty awkward position. And one thing that I don't know that we're going to be able to count on indefinitely has been the growth, which has almost been exclusively on our residential side, which is also down 50% this year over last. So I just want us to be really cognizant of the consequences and the impacts of our decisions, right? It's not to be taken lightly. And, you know, we can have best intentions, but to say unintended consequences are, they're a task, so.
And there are unintended, unintended consequences of not putting limits in place as well.
Sure. But I would also argue that we do have limits. We currently have limits. I was on council. As a matter of fact, I've been on a few months when I voted favorably for the drainage criteria manual, right? That in and of itself has an impact. What I will tell you right now is the problem that, that DCM has is not a, a curtailment of increased impervious coverage. The problem is it doesn't address the lack of drainage improvements and infrastructure that exist on anything that hasn't been improved since we adopted the DCM. All it is, is it, is it helps us manage on a go-forward basis. And as we've heard from folks earlier this evening, you know, we have drainage problems that have existed here for years, right? Five years is what we heard earlier. We all know the problems. I would argue that I've been involved with city council now for, for five years. And I know that the, the issue with, with Pleasant Nixon existed before I came on board. So five years was, was a short arm. Maybe it's gotten worse over five years. But we know that these things exist, right? And what we, what we have done is started taking action to curtail additional or I guess mitigate future impact, right? Well, what we haven't done is addressed the problems that have existed and predated items like the DCM. So. I don't know that, you go for it, Wendy, sure.
I, I just, I mean, I, I appreciate this agenda item just kind of getting the council feel for what we'd like to see addressed in the comprehensive plan based on all of the work that's already been done. I don't, I know that there is a product that's supposed to be part of the comprehensive plan. It's the land development code. And so I think there are ways that the city can find alternatives, as Amy pointed out in, in this document that is, is done based on drainage, that will incentivize people to develop their properties in a way that will be more beneficial to the community. And right now we have certain restrictions in place, like that you have to have attached structures in order for it to be part of your house. And it's incentivizing, instead of people building an accessory building, it's incentivizing people to just build lot line, lot line, to get them up that they can out of their property. So with that being said, I don't think we should limit what the task force wants to talk about. I do think it's good to give them some parameters on that we don't want them to consider three-story buildings against our residential or higher, higher than two-story. And that we don't want them to become drainage experts, that we do have those specifications available to us. But, but that is not, it doesn't mean that they can't talk about it. But I, I think in the scope of what this agenda item is about, it was just kind of getting the council's feel for what is ultimately going to be adopted by the council. And that's going to be something that's less specific, I think, that gives us more room to actually have future city councils make decisions. So that's all I'll say.
Mayor Dyson, Kevin Shell has his hand raised. Would you like to recognize him?
Yeah, absolutely. Hi, Kevin. Three minutes, bud.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to like, I swear to God, I wasn't going to talk about solutions. And I'm not going to do that here either. But I do want to, as someone that's been here for 22 years, I want to, I want to just comment on what the mayor just said. That we, at Pleasant and Nixon, we did not have these type, these type of drainage problems. I think we had one event in 12 years, right? And since the sewer line's been put in, I'm just saying, since that's happened, that the times that we have drainage problems down here has increased dramatically. So maybe that's just the weather. Maybe that's just coincidence. I just, you know, I, I don't think it is. I'm, I'm not going to tell you what it is. I believe that's the experts. But historically speaking, something has happened that's changed the amount of drainage on our streets. And just, I do get nervous as I see, especially uphill for me, more and more homes are getting sold. Two were just sold in the last month that are directly above us that it's going to put, well, which may or may not have an impact on us. And I, I like where you're going with the strike force. I like the, I actually like the comprehensive plan. Not necessarily redevelop, not adding, tripling the population. I'm glad you called that out. I'm glad that Amy doesn't want anybody to move or lose sleep over this. But I do think if, if they think drainage is a big part of the issues we have, they should be able to talk about that. So that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Again, we definitely shouldn't talk about drainage.
We're fine.
We have, we have a big plan about it.
Yeah, this is not a limitation on a discussion of drainage. It's a boundary based on an area that has been a landmine. And I feel that the council has done a lot of work to try to work on this issue and that we have some documents that were recently done as early as last year that kind of encapsulate the direction that we've been working on this issue in. And we have infrastructure that can get put in that will help start alleviating some of the additional drainage issues. That was the point of the IIP that we spent a lot of money on. And so my concern is that I, we have, you know, we have documents that have next steps that are ultimately policy decisions. But for example, if we were going to make a policy decision on doing residential impervious cover limits versus a drainage fee, which also in the IIP is indicated as something that would be based on the amount of residential impervious cover that a property already has. I would, I would need us to go out and get, you get someone who does financial analysis on how that's going to actually impact our city or have Pegasus increase the fee they're going to charge us and include that as part of an additional round of fiscal analysis they do. These, these policy decisions that have been left to do in the future, I think they could seem like something that, I, I mean, if, if there's a citizen group that wants to look at those policy issues and consider them devoid of any fiscal analysis, then I think we're going to have public opinion, just like we do right now. But we're not going to have any fiscal analysis of how that actually is going to impact our city in our future tax collections. I'll say that if that's the direction we're heading, I'll sell my house and move right now too. So I know we've had people say that and on, on, you know, thinking that the council is going to go the direction of a scenario B or C. And I, I feel the same way if, if we're going to, if we're going to, this is going to open up Pandora's box of residential impervious cover limit. And so that's why I put it on the agenda to see if that's the limit that the council wants to put on the discussion. So I'm willing to make a motion, but if y'all feel like that we've got enough direction as well, I, I'm just looking for just kind of an understanding of, are we, are we actually making the policy decisions on alternatives that are in our previous documents? Or are we importing the language from those previous documents? And the same could be said of the parks, you know, the Parks Master Plan, there's recommendations in there. Are we going to get into actually deciding between those recommendations? Or are we going to incorporate those and, and, and then put those all together in one place with some cohesion?
Um, I just, I want to add something here that I hate that I have to add. But I feel like that there has been, there have been comments in the community aimed at me, specifically defaming me for being very developmental, humbly and wanting giant developments. And yeah, I have a property that I am currently working on building. It's not going to benefit me whether or not we have impervious cover restrictions or not. me whether or not we have impervious cover restrictions or not. So any conspiracy theorists out there who want to start spreading rumors about me and my property that we're developing, we're using the footprint that is there and adding a modest addition, two-car garage and, and extra bedrooms. But we are not adding much impervious cover and not any extra buildings. I'm just going to say it out there because then I can point to this meeting where I've said it on record for all the people who are wanting to say things about me that aren't true. So I love this community enough that I bought a house here ten years ago, and that we bought another house that we want to make our home. And it backs up to the Green Belt because I love trees and greenery and armadillos, because my subdivision's called the Armadillo subdivision, and we back up to the Green Belt. And all of the things about the comprehensive plan that involve trees and nature and animals matter to me. And I think they matter to everyone on the city council. So getting out of the topic of the agenda, but I don't, I felt like I needed to say that since I was supportive of this agenda item. And Gavin went to sleep, so it's time for just.
Stretchy.
So I'll motion, if y'all want to vote, on the motion, we can, or if it dies for a second, and I think we'll have at least some direction. But I would move that Pegasus would synthesize the previous findings related to drainage into the comprehensive plan and forward the next steps of the IIP into the comprehensive plan as written in the IIP. And that any discussion of residential impervious cover limitations, if included in the comprehensive plan, will be limited in scope and language to what was previously determined in the IIP.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, council? We've already had quite a bit. Not hearing any. Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
No.
Gavin Maskin Gill?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro?
He's asleep.
Buck, you asleep or muted?
He's muted.
Aye.
Thank you, Buck. Okay. So the motion carries. Did we get the motion? Ashley, Amber, we're good? You guys still awake, too?
We're here. We're awake.
Right on. I tell you what, I think that brings us to thirty-six and thirty-seven are the last two on this one. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thirty-six, update discussion, possible action to pass resolution, request a meeting with, to provide information or statement of position of the city to and/or to request information or analysis from the relevant state and local officials in connection with the proposed South MoPAC expansion. Amy, Wendy, do we have any updates here?
It's a long one. Just kidding.
Oh, man. I was about to turn my camera off. Okay.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Good deal. Thirty-seven, update discussion, possible action regarding B Cave Improvement Project text that has committed to co-sponsor in the city of Rollingwood that will address the low-water crossing flooding issues, expand five lanes with shoulders and sidewalks throughout Rollingwood portion of B Cave Road.
No update.
Yeah.
Updates. Okay. For record's sake, the department reports noted items through thirty-eight through forty-eight are available. Motion to adjourn? Call it a night?
Sound moot.
There we go. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Appreciate everyone's time, council, staff. Man, don't sleep in too late. You guys got to work again tomorrow. Thank you all. I know, Charlie, you too, buddy. Appreciate it.
We are going in proud to earn our raises y'all gave us. Thank you so much, and the increases in salaries, and we're ready to work.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, administration, and for the members of the public that joined us this evening, that stuck with us. Thank you all very much. I look forward to the need work on this stuff. Have a good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.